Thank you so much for attending this town hall. I wish we could all be together in room, but this is the next best thing during this period of pandemic. I want to start by thanking all the members of the faculty and the staff and our students for the extraordinary work that you have done this semester. An unprecedented requirement to pivot to a remote campus with almost no warning. And every single one of you stepped up and made sure that this was as productive and useful a semester as we could possibly make it. That is no small achievement and really my hat's off to you, President. Me and Senses thanks, the Board of Trustees asked me to thank you all for all the work that you've done and for the work that you will be putting in from here on out. The purpose of this town hall is to introduce you to some of the concerns that we have about the university's situation going forward. We want to be ensuring that we are working on the planning side alongside many other people who Garrett will explain shortly are working together in committees to try and address the issues that we face. We are working hard on all the financial questions that the university faces and making good progress, I'm pleased to report. But this is going to be a very challenging period as anyone who's been reading the newspapers notes. We have unemployment levels that are worse than any time since the Great Depression. The state tax receipts are falling precipitously and that has have an impact on the resources that we usually rely on in our state allocation. Many families are contending with unbelievable pressures, job losses, income losses, all the isolation that comes with a pandemic. It's been a very, very difficult period and it's bound to be so going forward. And this means that the university needs to put a great deal of effort into planning for its future and to thinking hard about how we can adapt as we have this semester. But it's not going to be a school matter and it's going to call on all of us to lend our support. In that regard, I want especially to thank all of the people who were deemed essential, who have been working on the campus still and who have been so generous with their time and attention to the campus's needs. We wouldn't be able to function without you. This includes, of course, our colleagues in public safety and IT, the people who are helping keep the animals alive in the laboratories, so many people who have really worked hard to keep things running. I want to thank my senior staff, which has been working around the block pretty much every day to try and stabilize the university's situation and plan for its future. I want to thank the deans who have been so assiduously careful about working with their colleagues and plotting out a future for the departments that report to them. Their work is very much appreciated. In all that we do and all that we will do, we take the safety and the well-being of our community as primary. And here I want to point out something I know all of you realize, but I think it's really worth attending to. We have a very distinctive student community and faculty and staff, but especially our student community. As you all know, we are a majority minority campus. Many of our students live in surrounding communities that have been particularly hard hit by the virus itself and by the economic fallout that has has come on its heels. I think that imposes a special responsibility on us as we think about how to plan for the future of the campus when the pandemic begins to lift. Our students move back and forth between the campus and those communities that were very hard hit. They often live in multi-generational households. They live in communities that are densely settled. And all of that means that we have to be particularly careful about their health and safety as we think about what's possible for us and set a high bar for that safety as we contemplate the future. But I do want to say that all the planning work that's being done, whenever it is put to use, will be extremely important. It will express the community's desires and expectations for PPE, for cleaning, for social distancing, all the things that we know we need to take into account whenever the campus opens. But that decision to open itself is going to be something that we're going to have to think about very, very carefully with respect to the special qualities and characteristics of the community that we serve. I've spoken with Ares, I know he feels very strongly as well that we need to keep this very much in mind. Let me bring up the first slide and run through what we're going to try and accomplish in this meeting. So first, we're going to take a look at the financial situation of the campus, both for fiscal year 20 and going forward into fiscal 21, and Kathleen Kierlis will guide us through this discussion. Then we're going to look at what the federal government is doing, both for the campus and for our students. And we want you to know how we have come at the task of distributing funds to the students in particular, because that is already underway. We're going to then shift to talking about how we are going to plan for the fall. What are the mechanisms? What are the opportunities for participation? How are we going to make sure that all the communities that care about these questions have an opportunity to express their views and engage in the discussion? And Garrett will lead us through that discussion. Of course, a special note for any university is how we handle the academic planning process. And there, the Provost is going to lead us through the discussion about how we can learn from what we've been through this spring in terms of the pivot to distance or remote learning and what kinds of considerations we need to bear in mind as we plan for staffing. Finally, as a special treat for everyone, it will be my pleasure to introduce many of you who have not met him to Marcelo Asfaro Roscoe, who will be their permanent chancellor starting August 1st. He has a special message for all of us. All right, so let's go to the financial update and Kathleen Kierlis.
Good afternoon, everyone. But would take some opportunity this afternoon to begin to provide some information about the current financial situation of the university and where we see the finances looking over the next several months. So if we go to the next slide, before COVID-19 started, back when we last had our last town hall and early this year, the university was on track to really get its financial house in order. If you look in the middle of the slide, you'll see our fiscal 2020 budget. We were planning to have a balanced budget. And as we came out of the first quarter of the year, we were in very good shape, still planning to have a balanced budget with our revenue up a little bit, our expenses up a little bit, but didn't really matter because everything was balanced and the outlook was good. You also see on the slide, we also had planned out for the next five years. We did have some plans for fiscal 21, where we were planning 2% revenue growth for the upcoming year. Our expenses were, we were thinking it would grow a little bit more in 21, 1%, and then we were going to begin to start making some progress towards the trustees' margin requirement of 2% as we went into fiscal 21. So this was, you know, this was how things stood, you know, as we progressed through the first part of the fiscal year. So if we go to the next slide, in March, things took a change. We began to hear about COVID as we came back and started the spring semester. But in March, the university really started undertaking in much more focused efforts to assess the financial impact of what COVID-19 might mean to our budget. So initially, some of the first things we were looking at, we're looking at room and board adjustments. So as we went to move to remote instruction, what kind of costs did we have for that? But making sure that our students, you know, as they went and began the remote instruction, how they needed to maybe look at things to be adjusted for, room and board and parking. And as we did that, then we also took a look and said, okay, now that we're seeing what some of the impacts look like, what are some of the solutions that we might need to do as well? And we first started to hear about stimulus money from the federal government. And as that became more developed, we began to assess what the impact and timing of how federal dollars might also help the university for to address some of the COVID-19 issues. Moving along. So when we first look at room and board, now, one thing to point out for UMass Boston that we all know, but just as reminder, is that our dormitories aren't owned by the university. They're owned by private privately by Providence, a company called Providence, who's worked very closely with the university around refunding for housing. But as we looked at refunds the university would be doing, we were looking primarily at dining and then also parking. So one of the first things we did was look at dining for Boston, for us, if you look in the middle of the column here. For us, you know, the results, we refunded students dining beginning when we went to remote instruction in March. So it was nine weeks, nine weeks of classes, and that turned out to be just a little bit under $1.7 million. And you'll see from this, I did include this slide in the presentation, just so you can see that for us, for once, Boston had a little bit different impact than some of our other campuses at the University of Massachusetts, who had much more of their operations as residential campuses, saw much larger refund amounts that were due to their students, that were much larger than ours. If we go to the next slide, the next step was to really figure out exactly how much refunds were going to be needed. So we really went through, working with Student Affairs and working with COCM and SEDEXO, what students were going to be on campus, some students were we able to remain if they had no place to go. Some of our international students wound up having to remain here in the US. So we sized this all up and we found out, we still had some students stay, but the ones who went, we're going to go home. We did do an adjustment, it turned out to be just under $1.5 million. Then we took a look at financial aid. We do have the opportunity to fund what's called the Campus Living Grant for some of our students. And this helps students afford to live on campus and pays for some of their housing and dining. So we took a look at that and basically any kind of adjustment to the students' account. We backed off the institutional funded portion of financial aid and then made adjustments to students' accounts for dining, which turned out to be just under $1.3 million. At the same time, working in parallel, we did work with Providence and the UMass Building Authority to have a housing adjustment for students with their bill for the housing. I would say, I would really want to acknowledge Providence in this presentation today because this is something they didn't have to do, but that they really worked with us to do. And that hasn't been the same outcome for students who live in P3 residences elsewhere in the country. So, you know, I think for us, this was the outcome we wanted to see. And we were pleased to see that our students were able to get credits for their housing as well as for their dining. Then next, so then next, after we looked at housing and dining refunds, we also had to look at some of the other impact that COVID had. And so we had costs that we bought additional Zoom licenses for remote instruction. We started to save some money when the university was closed in terms of not having instruction on campus, so we could put some of the buildings into a remote occupancy status so that the utilities cost less. So for us, you know, we initially first quantify this at the very beginning of August, or not August, excuse me, April. And for that, we had a really pretty modest amount, only about $700,000. So we were looking at about a $2.4 million impact for COVID-19 on the university's finances. And so you can just see here for just comparison, you'll see across the whole University of Massachusetts, you know, our $2.4 million went into overall total of about $50 million of, or excuse me, $124 million of impacts. And then we've had solutions, we figured out how we could, you know, get our budget back to balance. We saved money on utilities and we cut back on non-personnel spending and we were able to show a zero. So that was good news for us in terms of just being able to continue to stay in good financial order. And this was the very first time in April that we that we had made efforts to quantify this. But the COVID impact isn't something that's a number that just, once it's set, it stays and doesn't change. So we've been continuing to monitor the situation. And if we go to the next slide, we've got, we've known, we've learned more as April progressed and as we moved into May. And so we've seen now, after we've done the first pass at the numbers for the $2.4 million, we've learned that there's other kinds of cost revenue that we were receiving less of. So there's not, the campus is operating remotely, there's nobody on campus who's, that are dining on campus. There's no parking being paid. Our educational services account, we aren't offering events and some of the activities that bring revenue into those accounts. And so we have less revenue coming in. We also saw that when we went to remote, nobody was going for our staff, nobody was going on vacation because there was no place to go. People had to stay home and they could work or they were home sheltering at their house. And so what we saw, our vacation liability for the university grow. That wasn't something we had predicted earlier in the year because prior to COVID, everything with vacations, people were going on vacation when they scheduled it and things were going on pretty much as we had planned. So that was, that was a new development that was, that came more, became more apparent during April. And then we also discovered that, you know, as we really began to scrutinize more and more of the non-personnel costs, we could get some additional savings there. But still, as we see over time, that the gap has broadened a little bit larger. So now we're about $3.4 million deficit for fiscal year based on what we know for COVID impacts through the beginning of May. So we are still, we've got some solutions in place, those utility savings, you know, everyone's worked really hard to cut back on the utility spending. Researchers have worked with facilities to turn off equipment in laboratories that aren't being used. And we've shut down pretty much everything we possibly can on campus to save. And we've reduced some more non-personnel costs. We've also begun, there's also some personnel savings that we've done that Marie is going to talk about and update the campus community on. But basically, what I really wanted to come away from this slide with is that this number is a number that is going to continue to evolve and change. It will continue to be updated till we close the books in fiscal 20 and move on to 21. But it's, we're just all going to get smarter about this over time and have transparency around it. But you know, it's something that, you know, every day we're working to understand better and to make, to put solutions in place. So I'm going to turn to the next slide and talk a little bit about the third quarter projection, which this is the first, so this is the university's financial results that go through March 31st. And here's where we start to see the impact of COVID across the board. So if you just look at this spreadsheet, and I'm not going to go through every single last detail. There'll be groups on campus that I will do that with over time. But for today, I just wanted to let folks know here that, one, even at the end of third quarter, we're still projecting to be able to have a balanced budget. If you look down at the bottom, you can see the surplus and deficit is zero. But you'll see on the revenue part, almost every single line of our revenue is down with the exception of tuition and state appropriation. So we are seeing reduced amounts of revenue in all kinds of areas of the university. So our revenue producing accounts, based accounts like sales and service, we've seen grants drop down as research activity has dropped, Bennett put on hold. Our auxiliary services that are parking and dining, those are down. So we've had less, less revenue, $12 million worth of less revenue. But on the expense side, we've also been able to reduce our expenses. I mean, the biggest area is non-personnel. We have reduced that, as I've spoken about earlier, with utilities and contractual services and all those kinds of goods and services that go into this account. And we've also saved, I will point out, we also saved depreciation and interest expense too this year. Before COVID hit, the UMass Building Authority was able to go out and refinance some of the university's debt. And we were able to incur some savings there that we hadn't previously planned. So we're going to save almost a little over $3 million in interest this year, thanks to the refinancing that went on. And then depreciation, we're able to reduce that a little bit because we also had our construction go on hold. After COVID hit, the Mayor Walsh did put a construction ban in the city and the university stopped their construction in conjunction with that. So there's some projects that were unable to be completed in the timeframe that we originally thought. So now that the mayor is looking to get some of the construction back up and going with certain protocols and safety measures in place, that's something that we're working with the UMass Building Authority on and our Facilities Department. But you know, it's very limited, I'm just really coming back to, you know, comply with all the kinds of COVID-type safety protocols that will need to be in place for construction as activities begin to slowly resume. For the next slide. So in order, just to follow up a little bit more on just getting to the end of the fiscal year of the balanced budget, as I had shown on the previous slide, we do have some big revenue drop-offs in the auxiliaries and the revenue funds. And then the sick leave and the vacation leave had increased. So those were some, some items that made our budget begin to show a deficit. But we have solutions that are in place to close that gap. So reductions in costs, just a little bit more specificity, utilities, the shuttle bus, we're saving hundreds of thousands of dollars on the shuttle bus contract because the shuttle buses aren't running right now. Janitorial services, we still have cleaning going on for all the occupied spaces. We have cleaning, cleaning, some deep cleaning going on in the university while people are working remotely. But we don't need all the cleaners that we've had historically because we just aren't operating with everybody having classes on a daily basis. As we look to reopen the university, this is an area where we will be putting intense focus, really making sure that we would have cleaning protocols that would be necessary to deal with COVID at that time. And then one last big sources of savings for non-personnel's travel. Unfortunately, faculty and staff haven't been able to travel during the past several months. I mean, conferences have been canceled, professional development opportunities have been, you know, put to being on Zoom. So there's been costs that we had previously budgeted that we aren't incurring for travel. We've also working with the finance folks throughout the university, who I also would just give a shout out for, who've been really working very hard and trying to keep their colleges and their departments up to date on the latest going on. We've had, we've set the spending limits to only cover those things that are most essential. So there's procedures out there about how if there's essential items or services that need to be purchased, those can be, those can be completed. But all the other kinds of spending has been halted for now. We've put a closure date for May 8th for requisitions for fiscal 20, unless it's some kind of real emergency that needs to go through. And we've reduced pro car limits just to restrict spending and make sure that, you know, we're trying to only spend resources on those things that are most essential to the remote instruction that's going on with the university today. And then lastly, we've also had to look at some reductions in personnel. We've done a hiring chill and we've had a reduction in temporary and student workers, which I will turn over to Marie Bowden to talk a little bit more about.
Thanks, Kathleen. Hi, everyone. A lot of you had questions about why it was that we had begun discussions with the unions and with others about the possibility of folks taking some vacation time in FY '20, that is before June 30th. So I thought it would be useful perhaps to spend a couple of minutes talking to people about the way in which some of the staff initiatives that we're all, you know, only too familiar with have impacted the FY '20 budget to help explain why we're making requests like those vacation requests. To sort of look at the top of the slide, these are all pre-COVID things, but they're steps that were taken that affected the FY '20 budget and that affected our ability to be balanced. And so that number that Kathleen showed, that was what was presented to the board at the beginning of April that showed us with a balanced budget, was not something that happened by accident. It was the result of, you know, a lot of hard work and some impactful things for people. And to just acknowledge that, you know, the VSIP was a big part of that. And also highly paid non-unit staff and some not so highly paid non-unit staff forwent salary increases on July 1st of 2020. So that produced, you know, and not insubstantial savings as well. And I don't know how familiar everyone is with that, but just to put it out there, people who made more than $92,500 got no salary increase at all. And people who make between 65 and 92.5 got only 1%. And then those who make less than 65 got, you know, the full 2%. So those steps-
And Marie, that was in 2019.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, July 1st, 2019, the beginning of FY '20. So those steps had a big impact on where we are in FY '20. And then some of the things we've taken since COVID, and Kathleen talked about them a bit, were the hiring chill. And I know that's, you know, very inconvenient and requires a lot of work on everyone's part and is impactful on everyone, but it has produced savings that help us. And we've also reduced temp staff and student workers. In that same vein, that's why we're talking to people about vacation liability because as Kathleen explained, the FY '20 budget was premised on a certain level of vacation usage that is based on the history. You know, it's easy generally, I think, the budget folks do a pretty good job predicting based on past behavior, what kind of vacation usage we're going to see in a particular year and so how big a liability we're going to have because our vacation balances in the aggregate do show up as a liability on the university financial balance sheet. Unfortunately, because of the unprecedented nature of what's going on right now, history has sort of ceased to be a good predictor. And as is no surprise to anybody, none of us are really taking much vacation because there's nowhere to go. And so that liability unexpectedly grew. And that's the reason that it would be valuable for people to take vacation now before June 30th because it would help take that liability down. The senior staff have all agreed to use five days between now and June 30th as part of that initiative. And as I'm sure many of you heard, we have also put that proposal on the table with several of the staff unions, the staff unions whose members earn vacation time. And I just wanted people to sort of understand the context of that because that is the reason that it's so important that we try and get that liability down. Because if we don't, then that's yet another thing that we kind of have to solve for one way or the other with some other step. So I hope that helps people kind of better understand the context for some of those requests. And if anybody has any questions, you can always follow up with me afterwards, I'm happy to discuss them.
Thank you, Marie. The next part of the town hall is going to focus a little bit on fiscal 21 and the budget planning associated with fiscal 21. So the first thing I would start with is that because of COVID-19, the whole planning timeline that we originally been working towards at the university has been changed. So normally, during the fiscal year, we would be in the process of preparing a budget that would go to the Board of Trustees in June for adoption. And at that time, we would be adopting tuition rates as well as the overall budget for the university. So for this year, the updated version looks like we've got on the slide here. So the board was briefed in April about the initial impact of COVID-19. That's where that $2.4 million value for UMass Boston was presented. And so the board got a first taste of, you know, this is how COVID is affecting the university's operations. Next, there's work underway to plan a budget, plan budget, so that there'll be an initial budget that will be going to the board in June for them to get things started. But they will be needed to be revisited in September as we see how things still progress with enrollment and the state appropriation. So for the beginning of the fiscal year, July 1, you know, we're looking to start the year. We won't have our budget completely set at that time. So we are going to look to continue it with essential spending only. Chris Giuliani spent some time talking today with the finance folks in the FNA Committee about that, some specifics about how that will look. But basically, it's continuing what we're doing right now over the summer. And as we need to get ramped up for school in September, some of what's essential will change over time. So there'll be things that we're going to need to buy to be ready for our students when they come back in September, and we'll do that. But in the meantime, we won't have the full budget set up like we did this year because we are looking to, you know, better understand where the state appropriation levels are going to be and where enrollment looks like. So you'll also, over the summer, there's going to be ongoing planning and consultation with faculty and staff. Garrett's going to talk a lot more about that during part of the presentation. But you know, there's work to be done over the summer for us all to, you know, really figure out how's the university going to run over the next year and what are the resources globally necessary for that? When it comes to September, there is a board meeting planned for the Board of Trustees where at this point, it's expected that they would adopt the more formal budget for the university at that time. And then we would follow along with budgets for departments in the university in September. So there'll be lots more information about this, but this is what the timeframe is, you know, the updated timeframe looks like. So moving forward. You know, I've been the chief financial officer for 20 years. And, you know, one of the things I'd say about this crisis is different than others is that this really is affecting every area of revenue that we have. So it's really, there's a lot of challenges and uncertainties that we're navigating through here. You know, it's different than 9/11, it's different than the recession of 2008 or 9. Or even when we think of the last few years, when we were challenged with how our expenses were growing larger, at a larger rate than our revenues. There, we knew, we knew the depreciation and interest, we could know what those numbers are, and we could see the revenue. I mean, this one, every single line of revenue, there's issues going on with it. So just briefly, tuition and fees, you know, our tuition and fees is dependent on enrollment. There'll be lots of- There'll be lots of time when we'll be talking about enrollment over the next several months um, to really understand what's going on with our new students and our continuing students and in-state students, out-of-state students, international students, um, all kinds of enrollment, all different areas of enrollment that we're looking at. Um, the other thing that, um, we're going to be looking at with the revenue budget for planning for next year is originally in the uh, five-year projection, we had planned a two and a half percent increase for in-state undergraduate tuition. At this point, that rate will be frozen, so we're not going to be increasing tuition and, and fees for our in-state, um, undergraduate students. So, um, that does have a fiscal impact on our budget, but it's also something that's going to be necessary for us to do for our students. So that's something we'll work through as part of the budget planning process. Um, the state appropriation, um, the states experience a, uh, you know, a severe decline in its tax revenues right now. Um, talk, I'll talk a little bit more about that later in the presentation, but, you know, state appropriation is another area of uncertainty for our budget. Um, for some of our revenue-based accounts, specifically sales and services and educational, what we commonly call the ESS account. Um, this account is largely dependent on activity on campus. Many of the things that raise revenue for this account are when people are on campus doing very different types of, of events and, 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 and activities. And so this one, um, you know, depending on how our, um, how our operations wind up looking is going to, um, have impact here. Um, grants, grants, there's also uncertainty, um, government-funded research. There's some, um, positive things with the federal stimulus, stimulus money for federal research, but then there's also uncertainty that, that exists. And then our private grantor as well, so, um, uh, factor into this particular account. You know, our advancement office is out working and raising money every day to help our students and to help our university. But there's uncertainty in, in the world of giving right now due to, to economic conditions. And then lastly auxiliary services, your auxiliary services are closely interrelated with, um, enrollment. How many people are on campus has an impact on what the people who are on campus spend money on. So that's something that we're also looking at to figure out, you, what's, what are, what will the revenue from auxiliary services look like over the upcoming year? Um, so in terms of planning for the fiscal 21 budget, just wanted to take an opportunity to share with the community how some of this is, is, is going to be laid out. So, you know, we started with the five-year forecast that we did in December, well before COVID started. This, um, you know, allowed us to kick the budget planning process off right after the new year. Um, now that we're into COVID, we're going to be, um, taking a look at updating the revenue budget because that's going to really help us first determine what steps are going to be needed to, in order to plan for, um, expenses. Um, some of our budget planning assumptions that we use every year, some of them are things that we can control, that we know about. Um, so where possible, those are, um, being reviewed and updated, um, so that we can, um, understand, um, you know, what the, how they factor into our planning. So for example, your tuition rates are one of those things. Um, you know, we get a chance to make recommendations around that and the Board of Trustees ultimately, um, adopts tuition rates. So it's a university-controlled kind of, of revenue item. Other assumptions are still uncertain. State appropriation is a little bit uncertain. We aren't exactly sure how that's going to land, so we're going to be working through that. Um, in order to plan for so much uncertainty, um, we're going to be working on a variety of scenarios, preparing them and reviewing them to assess both the operational and the fiscal impact. And as Garrett will get into, I mean, first, we're really looking at the operations and making sure that everything is safe i- i- for our students and our faculty and staff. And then we're doing things that are, um, what would be allowable with known science and, um, uh, you, safety in mind. So then we'll get the fiscal stuff wrapped around it. Um, so there's a number of committees that are, um, working on scenarios for operations. And some of these will ultimately be incorporated into the budget once we know more about the timing and the extent of activity that's going to be on campus. Um, so, you know, we'll, we'll be getting to layer some of the fiscal part, um, together as in conjunction with that work. And, um, the last thing with all these scenarios is ultimately these scenarios have to allow the university to achieve a balanced budget. It is very necessary that we have revenue that's going to support the expenses of the university. We aren't in the position to be able to continue to have rep, uh, expenses that exceed the amount of revenue. So the committees will be working on the operations and then we'll get, um, things in place that we have a balanced budget. Going next. Um, so in terms of, some of you who are familiar with the budget process, um, may be more familiar with the parameters, but basically, um, when we plan the budget, there's certain assumptions that we make in the budget. And then we work to, um, match up how that, um, will match up with what we actually see when students enroll and how some of the other activity, um, begins to materialize. So when we began our budget planning process for our state appropriation, we thought the state was going to level fund us. And that wasn't that, um, dissimilar to what we had planned in prior years. Now, right now, the minimum reduction that we're planning for is 5%. For our, for us, that's, um, a little, about $6.7 million. Um, it probably could be higher than that. It could be 10%, it could be 20%. We're going to be planning for a wide number of scenarios here. It really is going to depend on the state's, um, financial situation and how they can support, um, higher education within the Commonwealth. With collective bargaining, originally we have been planning a 2% increase. Now we're looking at a 0% in ca, increase per state guidance. Now this is all negotiate, it needs to be negotiated, so this is not, this is just a parameter that's being used for planning purposes only. Um, anything they would ultimately get, uh, be actual, would be a, a, a collect, subject to collective bargaining and negotiated. For modeling tuition, we had planned two and a half percent for in-state, out-undergraduate and up to three, we were allowed to plan for up to a 3% increase for out-of-state undergraduates and graduate. At this point for our campus, you know, we're looking, there are no increases for these. Really going to be looking to hold the line on tuition rates for our students to help them through this crisis. Excuse me. And with enrollment, enrollment's an area where for us, uh, planning is, is, this isn't a, 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 a big crisis for our budget. Um, it is a little bit more for some of the other campuses, but for us, we have planned to have relatively, we have planned to have flat enrollment with only a 1% growth in online for next year. We had been really closely working on looking at how demographics, uh, uh, impacted our potential enrollment. So for us, we don't have a lot of financial exposure on here, but we do if enrollment decreases. But for purposes of these planning parameters, we pretty much, this matched up to what we originally were planning. And then on the expense side, um, if we were planning for, um, a 0% collective bargaining, um, from the state for them funding 0% increase for collective bargaining, then on the expense side, we would be planning a similar rate, um, for a, a planning parameter. So that's right now is currently at zero. The fringe rate and the payroll tax rate, those are rates that are set by the comptroller, the Commonwealth on an annual basis. They cover, um, medical insurance and, and retirement fringe benefits, um, that employees, um, have as part of their compensation packages and payroll taxes are required. So those, those aren't changing. Those are still the same rates. And then the last thing is on the operating margin requirement. We had had a 1% operating margin in our, um, plans for fiscal 21 originally that would have generated about four and a half million dollars for the university. Now we're, um, we will only have to have a balanced budget. So the trustees have agreed that they aren't going to enforce the two and a half percent to two and a half, the 2% margin next year. Um, campuses just have to plan for a balanced budget. So that's what we have for our parameters. So these will be incorporated into the different, um, scenarios that we are planning for the university. And we'll be spending time over the next several weeks and months, getting more information out about this and having, you know, opportunities for education and transparency around these different areas. If we go to the next slide. In addition to the work that's being done operationally, we also are looking at some financial planning scenarios. So I just wanted to touch on some that's a system-wide planning exercise, just as some of the items that are, are being looked at. We certainly also are free on our campus to look at lots of other scenarios that we might feel, um, would be relevant based on what we see for our, the demographics of our campus and, and what we're hearing and learning a- about our own students. Um, so for, um, tuition, I, I had mentioned in the previously, you know, that we would look to freeze tuition, um, for out-of-state and graduate. For the state appropriation, you know, we're going to be running numbers for all kinds of different levels here, 5%, 10%, 20%. Um, just to, just to understand what those look like so that we can be ready once the state figures out what their appropriation, um, is going to look like. There's a real good chance that the state won't start the fiscal year with an adopted budget. They may wind up, um, going into, um, what they'll do is go into like a 1/12 budget, um, till they get the budget adopted. So we're working closely with, 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 uh, the central UMass office around, um, timing of this and just any kind of information we can have on, on where this is. But, you know, we expect this to be a little bit more drawn out than perhaps it is in other years. For enrollment, we're looking at different types of, working with enrollment management and graduate studies, looking at different types of enrollment. Here we've, we're one, some models that we've looked at is a 5% or a 10% reduction in, um, in enrollment. And also what are some of the impacts that would also follow from that reduction? So if we had 5% less students, how does that impact housing and dining and parking and those kinds of things? Um, international enrollment, one area that we're looking at is, um, no international enrollment. We also are going to look at some other, um, percentages where we think, some of our international enrollment students are still going to be enrolled. And we'll, so we'll be looking at some different models, but one, one area we looked at is what would it take if we had no international students? Um, and then last, some models regarding remote learning. If we continue remote learning, just as we have this semester, or if we had remote learning with some kind of socially distant, um, uh, occupy, some kind of socially distant presence on campus, what would that look like? So there'll be lots of more work being done on that and also really closely aligning some of these scenarios with, um, the work that our operational committees are doing. But we also, you know, we're working the, not only here on campus, but also the whole UMass system is really looking at different scenarios so that they can help inform the board about how things may wind up looking and there's information about that. Um, so next, just to put some numbers out there about the state appropriation. Um, just because sometimes people ask, well, how much is the state appropriation? For us, the state appropriation is just under $100 million this year, not counting fringe. So if you look for it, our, the Boston column here, this will just give you some numbers. You know, if we had a 10% reduction, you know, that's close to $10 million. And then if we add the fringe rate, it's, it's $13.6 million. And, and just to, to explain that a little bit, we use the state appropriation to pay for staff, set faculty and staff salary costs. So when we pay for staff, then the state pays for that 37% fringe rate. So it's basically extra money that the university gets to support its staffing costs. So, um, every dollar that we spend out of state appropriation for staffing really is about a dollar 37. So, you know, if, if it gets caught, um, it's more than a dollar that, that there's, there's a greater impact. So, you know, 15% is $20 million by the time we're done with salary and fringe. And if we go to 20%, we're at $27 million cut. That's just on the state appropriation alone. So, um, this could be a really big deal for our budget, uh, but we really are right now just really working to help, uh, you know, plan for different scenarios and then ultimately, you know, get plans in place once we know more what this looks like. So that's, I think, a little bit of, um, information around our fiscal 21 budget. Go to the next, um, slide. So, I mean, in terms of steps that, you know, campus community can be expecting, we're going to continue to develop this scenario planning. Um, really start, you know, figuring out as we see how, um, the public health situation is developing, what, what makes sense, what's going to be safe and, and get those, um, those kinds of, uh, plans in place. Um, we will be fine, looking at the revenue budget and then really being able to get budget plans in place is some of the budget, um, the revenue budget gets, uh, becomes more, um, known. You know, once we pass our freshman enrollment deadline, there's one part where we know things. When we see our continuing students continuing to enroll, when they get to September, we'll know more. So there's just different steps in the process where we're getting the revenue budget together. Um, yeah, I'm operating, you know, making, making operational decisions as I mentioned. And then also, you know, we're going to continue, you know, this is the, one of the first steps today, but we're going to continue over the next weeks and months, you know, continuing to have all kinds of ways to provide education and transparency about the university's financial position. Um, you know, this is something that's only is going to get solved through all of us working together. It's very serious and, and we're going to need to put all our heads together to, to, to find solutions and move forward. So, you know, I would expect over the next several weeks and months, you know, we'll be providing information to key university leaders. So the faculty council, the executive leadership team, department chairs, union leaders, student leaders, all kinds of leaders in the university, you know, getting information out there, being responsive to questions and concerns they have. And then also, you know, sharing our information so that we can all be informed about it and have constructive dialogue about how to move the university forward. Um, the faculty budget and long-range planning committee. Um, that, um, we were consulting with them and, and working with them. They've agreed to, um, have meetings over the summer so that we can continue to have, um, ongoing dialogue about the university's financial um, situation with the committee. Um, we also have an FNA committee. This is a group of finance commit, finance professionals throughout the university. It's about 80 to 90 people that have been meeting every week, um, who have our resources in their own colleges and departments to help staff understand about, uh, finances and to help, you know, get some of the financial operation, operational activity completed. So information will be being shared with that group. All of the operations, planning committees, you know, there's information that'll be being shared back and forth with them as they develop their plans. And then the campus community as a whole, whether forums like this, um, FAQs, different ways and we'll get information out to the entire campus community so that all can be informed, um, you know, as much as possible about, you know, where we are with the finances and how, how things are moving forward. So, next slide. Um, the next area I'd want to talk on, and then Katie, I'm going to turn this over to Katie Lynch, our, our university's, um, head of financial aid, is the Federal Cares Act. Um, the Federal Cares Act is an important resource for the university in helping us navigate through this, this, um, crisis. Um, if you go to the next slide. So in, at the end of March, the federal government passed the Cares Act. So it was a true $2 trillion stimulus bill that passed Congress and was signed by the president um, to help, help, um, address some of the impacts of COVID-19. For us, if you look at the blue box in the, in the third column, the Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund, this is the biggest source of funding in the Cares Act for higher education. So, um, most of the money that we're looking at to help support us is coming in that part of the Cares Act. And there's three major components of that $14.2 billion. There, 90% of that is, um, or $12.5 billion is being awarded through a formula. This formula, um, is 75% based on your Pell recipient enrollment and 25% non-Pell enrollment. So for us, this is a really beneficial formula. It's really helped us, um, secure $12 million in funding to help support our students and our university because of how this formula was applied to our university. There's also seven and a half percent of this, um, amount is being, um, awarded to historically-backed colleges and universities and minority-serving institutions. Um, UMass Boston is a minority-serving institution, so there is an amount of money that we'll be receiving under that portion of the Cares Act as well. And then last but not least, two and a half percent of this, um, $14.2 billion was to small institutions with unmet needs. This part really isn't going to benefit us, but, you know, we're looking to be a reception, recipient of $12 million under, under the first part, um, with the $12.5 billion, um, portion of it. So if we go to the next air slide, um, for us, so as I mentioned, if you look in the middle here in the chart, so for Boston, we're scheduled to receive $12.1 million. We've applied for this grant, we've, um, received, the student side, we've received, um, received the funding and the institution side, we are, um, in the process of, of getting that through the, their system. Um, so of this $12 million, um, half of this, um, grant is to be distributed to student emergency grants. And then the other half is to be provided for institutional support. So this is, um, a requirement that the federal government put in place around this money. And for our student, um, emergency grants, um, it's really designed to help offset some of the causes, impacts of COVID-19 on the students. So it includes things like students' cost of attendance, uh, for food, housing, course materials, technology, healthcare and childcare. So Katie's going to spend some time talking with us about how that's going to apply for our students. But for us, um, you know, the, the important thing is here, this is $12 million worth of funding that's going to come to the university to help us, um, uh, offset some of the impact of COVID-19. So on the next. Um, I want to just touch briefly on the institutional costs before we delve, dive into the students' side of it. So regarding institution, the institutional portion, which is $6 million for us, you're given pretty broad discretion under this act to, um, address costs that were associated with the deliver, how we had to deliver instruction due to COVID-19. Um, there's a one-year period that this, this grant can be spent, um, which began, began, um, in, in March. Um, there's eligible costs, so this is, the government does have, um, there are restrictions on how this money can be used. We can't just use it to, to backfill the budget. We do have to use it for specific, um, areas. And I've listed some of them here on the slide. Um, refunds to students for room, war, room and board tuition and fees and technology costs that help support distance learning. Um, additional financial aid grants potentially. Additional financial aid grants potentially, other costs associated with COVID-19. And then also, if, if demonstratably related to disruption of instruction, scholarships for fiscal 21. So we, at this point, we don't feel that we're going to necessarily need to use CARES Act money in fiscal 20. We are looking to use this as, in fiscal 21. And we do need to time it with how our student grants are awarded. So is, what, what the federal government has put a restriction on for this grant is that universities can't go out and spend the institutional portion of the grant. Prior to making awards for our students. So for example, if we awarded $2 million worth of grants to students, then we could spend $2 million worth of the institutional aid. So, you know, this is a restriction that we'll be working on. At this point, I don't anticipate that this causes major problems. But it is, it is just something that's part of the overall structure of the grant that we need to abide by. There also, I would point out, there's also some things that are explicitly excluded from using these funds. So we can't use this, these funds to support students who are enrolled in exclusively online programs. Or for any kind of contracted pre-enrollment recruiting activities, endowments or capital outlays related to athletics. So those are just some restrictions we can't use the money for, but I think there'll be plenty of COVID-type related costs at the university that we will be. Looking at, as we part, as we plan the budget for fiscal 21. So with that, that just sort of sums up a little bit about the institutional side of the CARES grant. But now I'm going to turn it over to Katie Lynch, who will talk about the student side of the CARES Act, which I think will be a little bit, be a little bit less dry than the institutional side of the house. So I'll turn it over to Katie.
Thank you Kathleen, and thank you to the leadership for having me here today to kind of talk a little bit about the work that a committee has been doing. Related to the student share of the Federal Cares Act funding. So if we go ahead one slide here. Kathleen spoke a little bit about this information, but essentially we have a little over $6 million. To use in direct student support for emergency grants to students. So we, we took a look at our student populations and some of the best ways that we could use those funds. And also the ever-evolving guidance from the Department of Education on the best ways to use these funds. And so looking at a $6 million share in the department's guidance, I'll walk you through in a minute, a model that we came up with and how we're going to spend these funds. A little bit about what the US Department of Education established as guidance. The funds are intended to be direct grant aid related to student expenses. That had to do with the disruption of campus operations. And we can continue to use these funds for any period of time that we continue to be disrupted. So if we have, you know, full disruption or some disruption in the fall, we can continue to help students meet their expenses that are related to that. Kathleen spoke a little bit about the categories of those expenses. But just to reiterate so that we're all on the same page about what students might be having trouble with and also where we can help them. Expenses include things like food, housing, technology, course materials and healthcare and childcare. And at the end of my few minutes here, we have a slide that kind of shows a breakdown of what category students are selecting as far as where their expenses lie. One thing that the Department of Education was very clear on is that these funds cannot be used for institutional balances. So we've been working with our friends in the Bursar's office to make sure our systems are in place to bypass any balance that a student might owe. So that we can get these funds directly to students. We hope to do the first round directly to students, funds in their pocket by the end of the month, and we're on track to do that. Funds can be spent within one, one year from when we signed the agreement, which was April 15. But we aim to spend these funds by the end of the calendar year. Making sure that we get as much money as possible to students as quickly as possible. But also continue to, to budget so that we can meet their ever-changing needs as disruption may continue. And one of the big things that the Department of Education interpreted the, the CARES Act to say. Is that students had to be eligible for federal financial aid funds in order to qualify for the CARES Act funds. The administration has quickly made a decision that we will do everything we can to provide equitable funding for all students. Those that might not be eligible, that might be in a temporary protected status, DACA, international. So those students in those categories can complete the same application that students that are eligible for federal funds can complete. And we're working as a committee to divert those applications to the other resources on campus that might be able to best support those students. We go ahead one slide here. So the committee worked together, looked at best practices across institutions and some nonprofit agencies that were providing guidance to us. And we decided that an application model was the best model for our student population. Would allow students to raise their hands and tell us what expenses they're experiencing. Rather than us make assumptions about what expenses and financial circumstances they might be facing. It also helps us meet the regulatory requirements that we document that a student had an expense related to the disruption on campus. So we came up with a simple web application. You've all received an email from me through Campus by Distribution that included a link to the application. It's also posted on the FAQs on our university homepage, and it's all been posted on social media channels as well. That application's simple, it takes two to three minutes for a student to complete. They don't need to provide any documentation such as receipts. They simply need to explain what category of expenses they've experienced. And what those expenses, the amount of those expenses they would anticipate having. I spoke a little bit about the marketing and communications, but we partnered with student affairs and graduate studies and academic support services. To make sure that we were doing direct messaging as well as broad messaging to the community. To make sure as many students as possible understand that the application is available. So the application does close tomorrow at 5:00 PM. So if you are working with students in your courses or any of the other activities between now and then, please encourage them to complete that application if they've had expenses and they haven't already done so. What our model does is it has a number of funding windows. And with those funding windows, it allows us to continue to provide support to students as they continue to have expenses related to the disruption. It also gives us milestones where we can know where, what we've spent so far. And what institutional support can be drawn down to match that and help with the campus budget. It also allows us to be agile, and that was one of the things we really wanted to be focused on when we designed this approach. Is that we could move windows if we needed to. If it looked like we were going to be fully on campus, we could spend all of the funding earlier. And so the agility that, and flexibility that exists within this model was key to our approach. I will note that there, there could be, students may have expenses outside of these funding windows. As always, a student can reach out to the One Stop and we'll help connect them to the appropriate applications and resources so that we don't bypass a student's emergency. Because we're not in the current application window. So the committee came up with this model. And along the top, you'll see that it walks you through the months remaining in the calendar year. And the first line underneath that are the target populations that we think are most applicable, although all students can apply. But we paid extra attention to reach out to students who are graduating this semester. Students enrolled in summer, students with technology challenges, students who had to come home from their study abroad trips. Those were some of those target populations that we thought about this term. Or this, this funding window. And as you move through, you'll see that, you know, in August, new students that are entering could participate. Because if we are disrupted, they also will have technology or connectivity costs associated with online instruction. And so forth, as we move through the fall. We expect students' awards to be between $300 or $200 and $1,200. And we know we can't meet all of the need that all of our students have experienced. But we'll do our best to be equitable in this distribution. And have a methodology in, in putting students in these funding tiers based on their reported expenses and their exhibited need. And with each window, we expect to serve, you know, the, a certain percentage of our students. And it's a, you know, it's the number of students who are applying. So the more that we get the word out, the more students we'll be able to serve with this. And then we have funding targets associated with each application window. Which will help keep us on track and allow us to make choices and make decisions along with the administration if we need to. Change or pivot to a different approach at any time. And just a quick snapshot on the next slide of kind of where we stand. These numbers were as of Tuesday, I think midday on Tuesday. And you'll see that at that point in time, we had 2,430 student applications. And students might fall into more than one of these categories, but I think it's important to show. The qualifying expenses that students are indicating. So students can choose multiple categories. But our students are facing the most trouble when it comes to food and connectivity and technology. And so those are the three categories that we're seeing students express that they have the most trouble. And so it's also, you know, informative for us to build other programs or reach out in other ways and make sure that they know what resources are available as we learn more from, from this application process. And I don't have a slide because it's, you know, as of last night, we were up above 3,200 applications. And we've done a breakdown throughout the application cycle to make sure we're reaching all audiences. And so that we know that we have representation across all ethnicities. About 90 to 95% of those students who have applied are eligible for federal funds. But we do have a number of applications from those students who are not eligible for CARES Act funds, but will be diverted. To other committees who work with other sources of funding that they may be eligible for. About 90% of the students who have applied thus far are undergraduate students and 10% graduate students. And 60% of the students who have applied so far are eligible for federal Pell grants. So we know we're reaching our needy population of students. And also those that may have been facing financial need that they're not, they haven't seen in the past due to COVID. So if you have any specific questions about the, the model that we're using for students or some of the funding mechanisms, or you're having any students struggle. With completing the application or finding it, please feel free to refer them to me or the One Stop. And we'll be able to get them what they need in order to complete it. So thank you.
Thank you Katie, this is Garrett Smith. This next section is about planning for the fall. Just a couple of words about that to start. Kathleen previously took you through a lot of financial planning for the fall. This section is about operational planning. And it says fall, I mean, that's our first opportunity to potentially come back to the campus. But this planning is going to be useful whenever we are able to come back. And what I'm going to try to provide is just a framework for people to think about and understand how we're thinking about the potential to come back of starting in the fall. So first, some assumptions that are informing our planning for the fall. You'll notice a theme here, which is it's all about safety, safety, safety. Number one, we really want to prioritize student, faculty, staff and community, and community health and wellbeing. Number two, really just dives deeper on that. We want to ensure that when, when we make decisions to reopen partially or fully or beyond. That, that we're making those, assuring that we have the right supplies, the right cleaning, the right social distancing provisions in place to make it feasible and safe for everyone. Of course, we, we really want to prioritize students' progress toward their degrees. We also know that if and when campus activities resume, I'm on number four, that, that risk will exist. There's just no situation in which there, we can make the risk be zero. And so we have to create options for student and staff who are at risk, who live or care for those who are at risk. Or, or who simply just don't feel comfortable taking the risk to be back on campus. And number five, that all our decisions are going to be based on guidance from the public health authorities and from government authorities. So we want to follow what the experts are telling us and the guidelines that they're giving us to proceed with trying to come back. To a face-to-face on-campus set of activities. So if we move to the next slide. We're actively planning for several possible scenarios for the fall. And I'll just say, there, there are a million different scenarios that we could plan for. So this is a simplified way of thinking about it. But first, is, you know, we could continue to be remote. It's probably not 100% remote because there are, you know, essential staff who are on campus now. Huge thanks to those people who are coming to campus every day or sometimes to keep the essential services going. So scenario one is, you know, we could just be nearly all remote, continuing in that sort of mode for the fall. On the total other end of the spectrum. Things could return completely to normal. And then in between, we're planning for something that, that could be much more of a, of sort of being on campus. I think it'll pop up as scenario three there, on campus with social distancing. Or something in between, which is a hybrid. Some things are remote and some things are on campus. And again, this is a spectrum and there are lots of different ways things could play out in between. But this is sort of the framework we're using to simplify and say, okay, let's plan for these scenarios. Now just a note about what we're doing as, as we embark on this operational planning for these scenarios. I think the next thing that will pop up here is that it's just completely, you know, I think it's not feasible that things are going to return to normal anytime soon. So, and, and we know anyway what normal life on campus looks like, and so we're not spending a ton of time planning for that. But, but when we think about how to plan for scenario one, I think the most important thing is how do we do it better? We, we're sort of, we're doing it now, so I don't think we have to think too much about how to do it, but how do we do it better? And then for two and, for scenarios two and three, the hybrid or coming back to campus with social distancing, it's really about how do we do it? And so it's not, this, this framework doesn't tell you yet what we're going to do. And I'm not going to tell you today what we're going to do. Just, just letting you know that we're embarking on a lot of planning about how would we do it? And because there's so many unknowns, we really need to plan, how would we do it in all these different scenarios? So that when the ultimate decision is made, we're ready. Okay, now I'll introduce a little bit more complexity. So on the next slide, under these three primary scenarios of remote, hybrid or on-campus. Well, if you think about the different big buckets of activities on campus that we typically have on campus, which are going down the left-hand side of this slide. We could end up making different decisions for each of those different kinds of activities. And as a result of that, you know, if one set of activities continued to be remote. And another set of activities could then be in a hybrid format, and another set of activities could be on campus. You can imagine there, that's when you start to get 100 different permutations of these scenarios that, that are possible. But if, if I just pick one of these out, take residence halls, which is listed there as D. You know, there's a scenario where we have, have zero students and staff in the residence halls. All the way down to, you know, the normal, if we could have 1,077 people filling the beds of the residence halls. And then there are these, these in-between possibilities. And so the, the student affairs team is engaging in a lot of planning with COCM about what those scenarios could look like. And as well, there's a campus, there's a campus life committee that's digging into this as well, that I'll talk about in a few minutes. So anyway, the point here is that there, there are 1,000 different permutations, but we're trying to simplify it. By breaking it down into these different sets of activities and these three broad scenarios, and then planning for each one of them. On the next slide. This is just another way to, to, to think about, you know, what could we bring back? So there are really two key questions driving which activities are the highest priority to return to campus. First is, thanks Lauren. The first is, is social distancing feasible? So if we take a research activity or life in the residence halls or coursework. The first question is, can we do it in a socially distant way? The second question is, how important is that activity to happen in person on campus? And again, there's a spectrum from sort of least to most or less to more. And Emily, we'll talk about this in a little bit. Her, her team is sort of looking at all the coursework that we typically offer and saying, okay, which, which are the most important things for us to do in person? I think, for example, within the College of Nursing and Health Sciences. The nursing simulation clinicals are something that's been deemed, you know, really, really critical to do in person. We have the CCR lab in which that can happen. That's probably something that falls on the right-hand side of this slide. And then, then the And then the planning has to happen, okay. Can it happen in a socially distant way? And how do you do it? So ultimately, what we can do is sort of plot all the different activities that typically happen in the campus on this two-by-two chart. And things that end up in the bottom-left-hand side are the things that would sort of be lowest priority to resume on campus. And those on the top right would be the highest priority to resume on campus. Of course, there are some things that have already been deemed socially, where social distancing is possible and critically important, and they're already happening on campus, that really small amount of activity that's happening on campus. But the question is, what would be next? And then what would be next after that? And what would be next after that? So we'd start to phase things back in when the conditions are, you know, when the health authorities say that we can and when we believe the conditions are safe enough that we could do it. And that leads to the third really key question on the next slide, which is, is it safe for any of these activities to return to campus? And so we're going through the exercise of sort of ranking and trying to think about what's possible in terms of social distancing and what's important in terms of having an on-campus presence. But of course, we need to overlay that always with, is it safe to do these things on campus? Okay, a couple of folks have referred to the committees that we've set up. And we've just set these up, yet they're already deep into their work because everyone's running fast at doing this operational planning of how all this, these different scenarios could be possible. So we've set up these seven committees. I have to admit that it's changed a little bit from when we first set it up because we kept, keep getting feedback and we keep getting good ideas about what kind of planning needs to happen. Some of these are, I think, sort of self-explanatory. The CARES Act, you just heard from Katie Lynch, who's co-chairing that committee and really thinking about how do we spend the student portion of the CARES Act money? Academics and Research and Scholarship Provost Emily McDermott will talk a little bit about those. But you can sort of picture what those are. The Safety and Recovery Committee is a group that we decided to put together. You know, everyone kept saying, we need to understand what are our protocols going to look like? What are the rules going to be around wearing masks? What are the rules going to be around social distancing? How will we think about cleaning protocols? And so we really need the experts on our campus to come together and be informed by what the health authorities are saying, as well as sort of learnings from the field to say, to recommend, okay, these are the protocols that we would need to have in place. This is the equipment we would need to have on hand in order to make all the work of all the other activity, all the other committees, I'm sorry, possible if we were to bring activities back to campus. And so I think that that Safety and Recovery Committee was something we added, which is of critical importance in getting this planning right. I'll make one other note, which is especially on the academic side. You know, we've set these up as sort of administrative committees and we've tried to get representation from the various divisions and offices that are critical for the cross-functional planning we need to do. But we have not involved everyone yet. And so we're continuing to think about what are the right ways, for example, to involve the different governance groups? How can we get broader representation of faculty, especially on the academic side? And so these are evolving. We just stood them up a couple of weeks ago and they're moving aggressively. And I think there's going to be lots of planning to be done on how to do these scenarios and how to do them better in the coming weeks and the coming months. So it's just a start, but we're trying to set up some structure and some frameworks for people to dive deep into the planning.
Thank you, Garrett. So let me just interject there for a second and say that this extraordinary amount of planning work is going to be valuable no matter when the campus opens. But it probably has not escaped your attention if you've been reading the newspapers and listening obsessively to the news, as all of us have, that there is a lot of pressure building now to reopen university campuses. It's somewhat parallel to the pressure governors are receiving in which the advice of health authorities and the concerns of people who are worried about the economy are somewhat at loggerheads. And that is the problem, I think, for universities as well. The questions about safety are not easy to answer. The availability of the materials that would be needed to be certain that safety was in place, there's a bunch of questions around that. So I just wanted to say that this planning work is exceedingly important whenever the university opens. But that at least when I'm asked for my opinion about this, I have been pretty stalwart in saying that the highest priority from my point of view is health and safety of our students, faculty, staff, and the communities around us. And until I'm sure that that is doable, that I will be advocating for slowing the process up. Not that there's zero on campus, but that we, again, focus on those things that Garrett talked about as being essential, that can really only be done on campus, and focusing more on a remote modality for everything else. Now, all this can change. And it's not clear to me that every single campus inside the UMass system is going to be similarly set up. After all, we're really very different. As you all know, we have an urban campus where people are using public transit to get to the campus. The communities we serve are among the hardest hit by coronavirus. If we take other campuses, the Dartmouth Campus, for example, very little use of public transit to get there. A lot more people in cars, a lot more resident students on campus. So a very different kind of configuration. The Amherst Campus is even more different than we are. It's almost fully residential. It has the third-largest housing system in the country. Very little public transit in play there. So some of the density questions that surround getting in and out and back and forth to campus are not quite as pronounced there as they are for our campus. So it's not clear to me that every single campus in the UMass system is going to come to the same conclusions about when it is safe to reopen. And we will certainly bring you more information on that as it evolves and as we discuss this with the public health authorities. But I am very, very insistent that the special needs of our campus and the populations that we serve and the communities they live in have to be uppermost in our minds. And that I've got to be absolutely certain that these safety concerns can be satisfied before I would personally be comfortable opening up the campus to its normal operations. But whenever it does, and that will happen at some point, all this planning work, all the people who've put shoulder to wheel, and all the people who will do so going forward, their work is not going to be in vain. It's going to be very necessary. The most important part of that work, of course, is on the academic side. And there we turn to our provost, who's going to walk us through how she and her deans and some of the other colleagues she's been engaging with are thinking about the academic issues. Emily?
Emily, I'm going to talk about the academic and research continuity planning efforts that we've been engaged in and we're about to enter a new phase of at this moment. So the Deans Council, which consists of all the deans on campus, the vice provosts, and the provost staff, and as well, the registrar, a representative of information and technology, and the IR office, meet daily or have been meeting daily since we went remote in March. And for spring 2020, the tasks that have hit this Deans Council planning group have been fast and furious. First, we needed to deal with how we would plan for student accommodations, how we would smooth the transition for students from regular classes to remote classes. And we dealt with the pass-fail deadline change and the withdrawal deadline change. And we dealt with a loner program for laptops and Chromebooks that we went out and our University Advancement Office got donations of and we lent out to students. We've dealt with setting up another effort that came through University Advancement, the RESPOND Program, which has been able to identify students who are struggling really especially hard in the transition to remote learning and has reached out to them and offered them individualized help and tutoring and academic support through that process. After we finished, well, we never finished, but after we had dealt with most of the early policy issues that we needed to deal with to help students, we turned to accommodations for faculty. And one of those accommodations, I'm sure many of you know, is that we gave a year's optional tenure decision year extension to any pre-tenure faculty who wanted to opt for it. And we've dealt with trainings, a large variety of trainings offered by the IT Department to faculty who needed help going remote. Those have included workshops, webinars, individualized help, and a variety of, you know, help requests 24/7 that the faculty have needed advice on. We also dealt with the faculty research ramp down in spring 2020, figuring out how faculty could ramp down their research to minimum operations, but make sure that those operations remained continuous and setting up a list of which people could come on campus to continue to do research, which research was deemed so critical, especially if it were COVID-related or so time-sensitive that it needed to continue for a period of time before it could be ramped down. So that was the first month or so of the COVID crisis. We then turned our attention to what we would do in summer of 2020. And after a fair amount of discussion and consideration and then looking at the facts, we made the decision to take the summer remote as well. Summer school faculty, you know, our fall and spring faculty are on regular responsible time in fall and spring. But summer school faculty are either full-time faculty who are doing work for additional compensation or they're hired in to be particularly summer school faculty. So they have no obligation to stick with us if we suddenly make a decision to go remote. And so we offered all faculty who were signed up for summer school teaching the opportunity to opt out of teaching the classes they had agreed to teach for the summer if they did not want to participate in the transition to remote. I think almost all stayed with us and opted to continue. We've been making faculty trainings available again, both group trainings and individual trainings that I would encourage any summer school faculty to avail themselves of still through the IT office. So after dealing with summer, of course, then we need to turn to what we're going to do in the fall. And that's the burning question, I'm sure, for almost all faculty at this moment. What are we going to do in the fall? And what are we going to do next spring? We don't know how long the effects of this pandemic will last. All we know is that it's not going to be a brief span of time that it applies to us. And we also know that it's going to vary back and forth, that things could get better and then get worse again. If we come back on campus, we might be in a position of having to go remote again on a dime. If we start remote, might we be able to later come back on campus? Those are all questions that everybody's asking at this time. So the process that we're in right now, I want to explain where we are on the planning process for the fall. The first stage of that process has been an administrative stage where the deans and the Deans Council in general have been gathering facts, gathering information that will help us inform scenario planning for what to do in the fall and next spring. The fact-finding includes, at this point, looking at every single course that's scheduled for the fall and having the department chairs and the dean come to judgments about how they would be ranked in urgency of their need to be on campus, to be given on campus. And we've come up with a three-part process, a three-part rating scheme by which a one at the bottom is a course that can, you know, with some losses, some gains, but whatever, can be given remotely without a whole lot of automatic loss of quality. That it can be done, it can be done with high quality, and it's able to go remote. A two on our scale is a class that can largely be done remotely. For instance, when you're doing the theoretical part of a class. But that there may be a portion of the class that really needs to be done face-to-face, a practicum part of it, field experience part of it, some piece of the class that actually would have to change dramatically or just totally have different learning objectives if it were going to go fully remote for the whole semester. And the third rank, the highest rank, the one that's most in need of coming back onto campus, is the one that would be really changed completely if it were not able to happen face-to-face. But Garrett already gave the example of one of the most urgent ones for our campus, which is the nursing simulation labs, the clinical labs where nurses learn how to deal with the actual physical patients. And they're applying all the theoretical knowledge they've learned throughout their programs. But in order to sit for the exams for accreditation as nurses, they need to deal with actual patients. They need to learn how to turn them over in bed. They need to learn how to put on PPE themselves and take it off without infecting either themselves or any of their patients. They need to do a whole lot of things that we want nurses very much to know how to do when they start practicing their craft out there in the world. The other critical on-campus types of classes might include some of the laboratory sections for science courses. Some of those have been going virtual. Some of them can go virtual, but there's a portion of them that really need to be face-to-face. And we're asking faculty to identify which particular courses meet that category. Similarly, some performing arts classes might need to be face-to-face as well. I can name others, but I'll stop with those. And basically, once the deans have collected these rankings from all of the chairs and all of the deans about all of the classes that are in the schedule for the fall, we plan to actually map out how many people that means would have to be on campus at any given moment during the academic semester and figure out how we can do that within the bounds of social distancing and how many groups we can bring on. So as Garrett was saying, there's a lot of different scenarios for how we can live in that hybrid space, the space in-between fully remote and fully online. And I can imagine a hybrid model in which only the number three classes and some amount of campus research were allowed to happen face-to-face on campus. I can imagine one that ratchets up a little bit where you might allow some number of first-year students to come on campus for some amount of their coursework in order to develop that bond between themselves and their university that might be harder to develop fully online or fully virtually. We might be able to allow some measure of access to the campus for students who need secure internet capacity and want to come on campus to gain internet capacity that's much more secure than what they have at home. Faculty and staff might want to be able to access Healy Library. Then there's the possibility that at some point we might be able to bring staff back on to campus. While most of our classes still remain remote, but we still had some of the staff return to campus. All of these are gradations that we're planning for, scenario planning for. We don't know which scenario we're going to be dealt at any given time during the semester. We need to know how we would deal with each scenario, how we would put it into practice, and what it would take to change on a dime if the external circumstances changed on us at that time. So those are, those are the ideas that the Academic Continuity Committee is going to deal with. And let me talk about the committees now. So the, the deans council has been doing the preliminary fact-finding to inform the considerations of these new committees that we're putting in place. The Academic Continuity Committee is one that will include representatives from the deans council, some representatives from the faculty in general, representatives from various faculty governance groups, including the faculty council, the college senates, the budget and long-range planning committee, the two faculty unions, that is, the FSU and the DCU, the Chairs Union. And they'll need some number of A&amp;F reps, the people who are the implementers who can tell us how many classrooms there are that have how many people and the safety requirements that we need to be thinking of as we make considerations and judgments. On the planning structures for that Academic Continuity Committee are not yet baked. There's still TBD. That's partly because we're in the process of impact bargaining with both the faculty-staff union and the department chairs union about what the impacts were of moving remote. And we've been discussing with both of them a task force or a committee that would work in the summer on the topics that I've been discussing. But we haven't come to final agreement on those. So it may be that we want to have one large task force or it may be that different groups want to split up and have their own related task forces. We'll find, we'll, we'll make those decisions in the next week or two. The goals of this Academic Continuity Committee will be, as I just said, to develop and refine nimble, evidence-based academic year 2020 to 21 scenarios, but also to really give a lot of thought to the question of how we can assure that if we go into a remote modality again or if we stay forever in a remote modality or move in and out of a remote modality, that we can still assure our students a top-quality academic experience. We, we had to make a very quick change in March. And students recognized that we made a very quick change. And I think everybody was willing to cut us some breaks about, you know, there were some glitches, some people didn't really understand how to do Zoom yet. There are a lot of, a lot of growing pains as we turned remote in the spring. But I don't think any of us believes that we should be able to say, oh, we're just learning again in the fall. By the fall, we need to know exactly what we're doing and how we're doing it. And we need to have thought through what the learning objectives of all our courses are and very carefully thought through, what do I need to change in the way I give my class through a remote modality in order to achieve the same learning objective as I had when I was giving it face-to-face? So every faculty member needs to come to grips with those issues. But there's a lot of research out there in the world about how you, how students learn and how, how students master information that I'm hoping that this committee will be able to access and come up with really helpful information for all faculty on campus about best practice for pedagogy by whichever modality they have to be teaching in when it comes to the fall. And once, once we know what the best practice is, then we need to make very carefully clear that there are training opportunities for all faculty throughout the summer in order for them to be able to feel comfortable with the technologies that they have to deal with and feel comfortable that they have thought through the learning objectives and made a match of modality to learning objectives that make sense for their classes. The, the final thing I want to talk about is the Research Continuity Committee or the final committee I want to talk about is the Research Continuity Committee, which Bala Sundaram is chairing or co-chairing with me. It is the committee that's going to talk about how we can ratchet up some amount of research on campus in a phased sort of way, given whatever the the health situation is at a given time along the time spectrum from now until fall and from fall until next spring. So our goal is to be able to allow gradual buildup in the number of people, number of PIs who are able to be on campus doing their research and in safe laboratories with social distancing and with safety protocols fully in place. And so this committee is going to make recommendations on that. It will include, again, deans and representatives from the deans council. It'll include faculty reps, many of whom have already been identified, and governance reps that remain to be identified at this point. So we'll be talking to people over the next week or so about participation in both this committee and in the Academic Continuity Committee in hopes that we'll be able to move them forward very, very quickly in the, in the next couple of weeks. But anyone who's interested in serving on one of them can, can get in touch with me at provostcommunications.com. And you just have to be willing to work through the summer, essentially, if you want to be a representative on one of these committees because we're just ending the, the school year and we're entering the time when some faculty very reasonably want to go off and do things that aren't necessarily related to service to the university. The last thing I wanted to talk about is just a quick update on what I'm sure you all know about right now, which is that we've sent out notices to associate lecturers, clinical associate lecturers, and anyone on the lecturer track who is on a one-semester non-continuing contract, that they may or may not be appointed again in the fall. The collective bargaining agreement specifies that associate lecturers and clinical associate lecturers are not, don't, don't have to be notified ahead of time, but we're always acutely aware that chairs, in the best of times, might have talked to an associate lecturer saying, I'm, I'm, I'm planning to give you a course for, for the fall. And therefore, we need to tell those people that their courses may or may not be still given to them in the fall. The main reason for this is that we don't know, as Kathleen, I think, made very, very clear, we don't know what our budget shortfall is going to be. We don't know what our enrollment is going to be. If we have a dip in, a major dip in enrollment, that always means that we have to cut back on the number of sections that we expect to give because we can't give the extra sections if, if we want to stay in business financially. So depending on the volume of that, of a student enrollment dip, we may have to cut back on the number of sections we give. In addition, if we suddenly suffer a $15 million cut in our, our state appropriation, we have another set of problems that we have to solve for. So what we're doing by sending out these notices to NTTs right now is just allowing us to say, okay, this is a potential place that we can solve for for revenue shortages that may hit us. We're not sure they're going to hit us. We expect some measure of them definitely will. But we don't know where we're going to need to go with solutions. We just need to make sure that these solutions are available to us as we learn more about the situation in the budget. So, so the, the bad news for the associate lecturers, the people who got the notices, is that they now don't know for sure whether they're going to get jobs in the fall. But the good news is that they may. You know, so it's, I, I recognize the the pain and the consternation that getting a notice like this causes to people. But I just want to be clear that it's a potential solution. It's not necessarily something that is going to happen. And if we have to reduce the numbers of associate lecturers on campus, we will do so. But there will still possibly be many sections that we need to give through people of this description. So it's, it's another wait-and-see situation. I regret that it's necessary. I'm sorry that we have to throw people into a sense of unease about their continuing work. But since we always cancel sections in the summer, if during the summer we cancel fall sections that are under-enrolled, it's, it's more or less life as normal. It's just we worry that we might have to cancel more than usual this summer. I think that's all I need to say. I'm happy to talk to anybody about it offline in email or on the phone.
Thank you so much, Emily. Let me just add to Emily's comments that we do recognize how hard it is for people to receive these notices and to inject this uncertainty into their lives. I wish that were not necessary, and I hope that we're going to gain greater clarity over the course of the summer on how these things are shaping out. I also want to give a shout out to our extraordinary colleagues in enrollment management who are working so hard to try to improve the enrollment picture. They are, we are creating whole new marketing schemes with our, our new colleague, Megan, who's, Megan Sullivan, who is the new director of marketing. And through all of this effort, I am sure we're going to see robust interest in UMass Boston. At the same time, the work the faculty do ordinarily is critically important for retention of the students that we already have. That's probably the most important thing we can all do, is to try to create the strongest possible programs, which you would do anyway, but which clearly have an impact on, on the retention of the students we already have here at UMass Boston. So it, you know, the, the difficulty here is not only that we don't have the information that we need, but history is not a particularly good guide right now. There's so much epiny error for our families that it's difficult for them to be concrete about their intentions. So we have to become as nimble as possible. Now, when these decisions are finally actually made, there'll be another person in my seat, and I am really delighted to welcome Marcelo Suarez-Arosco to this meeting. He is 3,000 miles away on the West Coast, where he's holding down the fort for UCLA's College Graduate School of Education, where he is learning just exactly how these same issues are playing out in California. So he is no stranger to the complexities of what we face at UMass Boston. But it will certainly be wonderful to the campus, for the campus, to have him here. Marcelo, please join us.
Thank you. Thank you, Catherine. Since my visits to our beautiful campus in January, in February, in March, and the honor of a lifetime to be appointed chancellor-elect of the University of Massachusetts-Boston, a great deal has happened in the world. Indeed, it feels like that was a lifetime ago. The virus has invaded all aspects of our lives, including our sense of time and our sense of space. Today, it's a greeting and a simple thank you and an applaud to the community. We've just had a very disciplined pithy sense, series of presentations done with great care. I am so impressed with the community, for their resilience, the smarts, and yes, the love and the dedication with which you stepped up to continue the fundamental mission of offering the best quality teaching and learning. Now, in a remote way, in ways that are extremely challenging. But what I'm learning in my daily meetings and communications with multiple stakeholders is the dedication, the sense of selflessness with which all stakeholders are stepping up to face this extraordinary challenge. As Catherine said, what's somewhat surreal is the fact that I'm, I'm in the University of California still. And what I see here at UCLA, but what I see up and down the system in California And what I see, uh, here at UCLA, but what I see up and down the system in California is so similar to the issues that are being addressed in Dorchester today and moving forward. I really want to, uh, applaud the leadership for their endeavors in these, uh, extraordinary uncertain times. The new, my new go-to phrase in the English language is, I don't know. There is so much we don't know, uh, today. Second, my heart goes out to all the victims of this catastrophic pandemic, to our first responders, to the essential workers, to everyone who is stepping up, embodying the ethic of care and service, to bring soccer, to bring, uh, uh, help, to service those in need. The victims of the pandemic are first and foremost in our hearts and in our minds. And this week is Nurses Week. It's a day of nurses in our, the week of, uh, uh, celebrating nurses in, uh, in our country. I want to give a special shout-out to our nurses, to the, to our dean, Dr. Thompson, to the faculty, to the staff, above all, to our students who are stepping up in the front lines of the pandemics, wake of horror, death, and devastation. We applaud your work. We're all nurses today. Thank you. To our students, this too will pass. What the pandemic has taught us, is teaching us day in and day out, is that ours is an ever-more interconnected, miniaturized, and fragile world. This too will pass, and we are all in this together. There is no part of life, the world over, that hasn't been dramatically affected by the pandemic. I look forward to come together, literally to put my shoulder to the wheel, as the Chancellor Catherine used that analogy, to join our, all our stakeholders, staff, faculty, administration, students, to, together, forge the pathway to a new normal that will continue to have, as the Provost, uh, mentioned, the quality of your academic experience, of your scholarly experience, the intellectual experience at the forefront, where we will together take the extraordinary work to date to the next level of engagement, of relevance, of excellence in education. And I'll finish now, what the pandemic has told, taught us, is teaching us as well, is that today, we need more of education. We ask more of science. We ask more of our first responders than ever before. And education will be more relevant to the path moving forward than it has ever been in the history of higher education. Muchas, muchas gracias. Stay safe.
Thank you so much, Marcelo. It's wonderful to see you, especially with that UMass Boston backdrop behind you, since that is what, your new home. Colleagues, I want to thank all of you for joining us today. I hope you noticed along the way that we addressed the questions that were sent to us. We opened up a, a special email zone for you to send us questions. And, uh, using those, we were able to answer your questions about health and safety, about, uh, PPE, about vacation time, about the specific sacrifices already made by administration in terms of salary, um, and about some of the issues you had around fall planning. But what we hope is that in listening to this presentation today, you now have other questions that are informed by what you know now about our FY20 and FY21 budgets, about academic planning, about HR issues. And I want to encourage you to send a next round of questions to the special email address, which is chancellor@umb.edu. And we will try to either convene another meeting next week or to send out an FAQ document. We'll figure out the best way to get answers to your second round of questions. This is the best way we could think of to try to give everybody an opportunity for a kind of Q&amp;A over the airwaves when there are just hundreds of people in attendance, and that makes it really impossible to do the kind of back and forth that we're used to in a town hall. And finally, let me say that, uh, apart from next week's, um, what we'll call it, Town Hall Appendix, I guess, or Annex, uh, this is my last town hall during my service as interim chancellor. And I want to say how much, uh, I have enjoyed working with you, what a privilege it has been to serve you, uh, how impressed I am with this campus, and, um, uh, how hopeful I am and confident I am about the future of UMass Boston. It is an extraordinary institution made of incredible people, uh, in a, in a fantastic city, and I know that it's going to be a wonderful place for, uh, Marcelo and all of the rest of you to be working together. I will not be far away. I'll be in the President's Office, um, working on various system-wide initiatives and look forward to helping UMass Boston in any way that I can from that perch. With that, we conclude our town hall meeting, and thank you once again for joining us. Hasta la vista.